Okay. Call the meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have three additions, 7H, approved resolution 2015-88 approving gambling premises permit for the Sox Center Conservation Club, 8A, offer to purchase Transit Garage, and 11B, a reminder for the concurrent meeting with the Sox Center Public Utilities. Is there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those three additions?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five and say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the November 18th, 2015 regular meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, clarifications? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2015 regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, sign the five and say an aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Now is our public open forum where we open it up to the public for anyone that would have anything they would like to address to the council. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We will then move on to our reports and presentations. The lifesaver award. Tim?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We are here today to present lifesaving awards to individuals for their lifesaving measures performed by them in a pre-hospital setting. On October 3rd, 2015, at approximately 7:55 PM, a call came into the Stearns County 911 Dispatch Center as a male who was sweating and had collapsed. The 911 dispatcher, Rachel Deal, performed emergency medical dispatching, which is also called EMD skills, and determined that the man was not receiving sufficient oxygen. Due to the fact that his lips were turning blue and he was experiencing agonal or snoring respirations, which is not adequate sustained life. She realized that this person needed lifesaving measures and instructed the caller, Ethan Josh, to start the process of CPR, beginning with opening the airway and performing mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. The Sox Center ambulance backup crew consisting of Andrea Kerfeld and Scott Tullis and Jamie Cole were paged for a medical and were advised that CPR instructions were being provided over the phone. The main ambulance crew consisting of Jeff Bromenschenkel and Mark Robert were just returning back into town from an facility transfer and responded to the scene as well. The Sox Center Police Officer Dustin Van Wally also was also dispatched and Trooper Anthony Butler was in the area and responded as well. The officers arrived on scene, found no pulse, and continued the sequence of CPR. And automatic external defibrillator, which is also called AED, was attached and analyzed, indicating no shock. So officers continued doing CPR. The ambulance crew arrived and determined there was no pulse, so the patient's airway was secured and CPR was continued. Just prior to loading the patient, there was a spontaneous return of pulse. The patient began to breathe on his own and color was started. Color started to return back to normal. The patient was taken to the Sox Center Hospital where he was stabilized before being transferred to St. Cloud Hospital for definitive care. It was determined that this patient had gone into respiratory arrest, which had caused, excuse me, which then caused cardiac arrest. His aftercare was continued at the St. Cloud Hospital and he's released from the hospital several days later and is back home to his normal life. I'd like to have the individuals step up that are receiving the award today. This is a true meaning of what CPR instructors call the link of survival. We have these individuals that are coming up here that played their roles in this scenario and saved another life. We have Ethan Roach, excuse me, Ethan Josh, who was a witness, quickly realizing the need for help, calling 911, and as a witness, having the courage to start the steps of CPR. We have Rachel Deal, the 911 dispatcher, using her EMD skills to quickly ensure that the proper measures were taken to sustain life. We have Officer Dustin Van Wally and Trooper Anthony Butler, who were the first responders, continued the need, the needed steps of CPR to sustain life. Then we have the Sox Center ambulance crew, which consists of Andrea Kerfeld, Scott Tullis, Jamie Cole, Mark Robert, and Jeff Bromenschenkel for keeping the chain of survival going. Once again, we have lifesaving crew. Because of you and the part you played, another beat goes on. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I give everybody a moment. Okay, moving on, we will then go to our EDA report.
Okay, the EDA met in a regular session today for their final monthly media, or their final meeting of the year. They had one agenda item on, and that was to receive an offer for the purchase of the interpretive center property. So later on tonight, when we set up the meeting regarding the Transit Garage offer, I'd like to at the same time talk about setting up a time when the city council can discuss that offer as well. So that was our one, our one agenda item that we had for, for that. And then we will be having a new member beginning in January because the chamber member is no longer going to be on the chamber board, so we will be getting a new representative from the chamber. So it's the only two things we really had to discuss today at the EDA.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. That, we will move on to public hearings, which is basically a public meeting for the 2016 proposed budget.
And you got in your packet, you did receive the resolution to adopt the budget and also the resolution to adopt the levy, and those will be action items. Under the public meeting portion of the meeting, the city council should discuss the budget, any recommended changes they may have, and also give the public an opportunity to ask questions and be heard. Everybody received their notice of taxes, that is proposed property tax that we'll pay in 2016. That's that kind of pinkish-orange sheet that everybody got that was parcel specific. It told them what their county share, city share, school share was all proposed to be for 2016, as well as indicating the difference, the changes they may have seen in their property tax value. A couple of things to note on that is the county did a, it's kind of a citywide increase in residential property tax values based on 53 arms-length sales in the test period. Because of that, some people did see increases in their taxes. As a general rule, if your, like, city tax went up less than your value went up, then the impact was more because of the value change, if your city tax, you know, and vice versa. So that was kind of one thing to look at. I did do a few calculations on it, so as we move forward, if you have any questions. A commercial value is increased by an average of 4.75 percent, and the residential value is at an average of 9 percent. And that was the value increase, and that has a big impact on your property taxes. It kind of shifted a little bit of the tax burden, if you will, from commercial onto residential because residential values increased at a quicker rate than commercial. But this is a little bit of a payback because a few years ago, the commercial took the brunt of it, you know, so it kind of evens itself out. There was a new commercial construction as well of $1.38 million that came onto the tax rolls for this tax period of 2016, which would be new value that was already established in '14 and was in effect on 1/1 of '15. So you realize we're always a little bit behind when it comes to the property taxes. The budget that you had presented to you tonight had the changes on it that you made at your preliminary budget hearing. And so that is pretty close to what we are proposing to adopt. And if you would look at that, you know, I broke it down, general fund, special revenue, capital projects, and debt service. The debt service, of course, we always propose to, we need to generate enough revenue to pay the debt. Capital projects, when you try to balance revenue and expense, it doesn't always work because we might bond and have the money sitting in the account in one year and expand it the next, so it doesn't happen in the same year. Same with some special revenues. The general fund is the one fund that you hope to come close to balancing out every year. And so we're, we are real close to doing that. Do you have any questions so far on, about the specific budget or the levy? As you recall, at the preliminary hearing, we went through the budget in great detail. In the end, the city council had instructed us that they were proposing a 4% increase in the levy, that they, at that time, were comfortable with that. How that really works out, if you look back over years, actually all the way back to 2004, that means all the levy increases we've had since then average out to 0.6% a year. To kind of give you an idea over the long term. Over the short term, it's 4% in one year, so that gives you an idea. I did have a chance to visit with Dave about the budget, and I have visited with Warren about the budget kind of one-on-one in more detail. They are the finance committee, although we did meet separately this time. So I think both of you have probably had comments that might be a little different from each other, so I think we should have that discussion tonight. I don't know if you want to see if anybody else has questions about how the budget process works first, or if you just want to get right into what you may be proposing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have questions about the budget? If you do, please go up to the podium where... Okay, all right, go start the discussion. If at any point in time you got a question, please raise your hand and let us know. Does anyone on the council have any questions, comments? I know there is one change that we noticed in the police administration budget.
Yeah, in the police department administration, and that would be on page five of the expense side. Under, it's, the code is 406, the three-digit code, and it's under maintenance agreements and software. At the preliminary budget, we had decreased that to $2,500 from $4,000. And we had, couldn't recall what all came out of that budget. But what happens is we have contracts with Stearns County and the APS system, the RMS system, and the sheriff's system. So these are like records and, and dispatch and all of those. And we have contracts totaling 4,300 for that budget amount, so we were recommending, or 4,200. We're recommending adjusting that up to that amount. And then lower down, there was $1,800 in office equipment and furnishings that we were going to delete. So when you net the two out, we were looking at an overall $1,000 increase in the police department with those two numbers.
Okay. Personally, I'm not overall comfortable with the 4% because I think there's areas that we could drop. And going through the budget, every time you go through, you see different changes. I was shooting for 1%, I could actually live with the 2% increase. And I think, Vicki, you said that would come to about, what, $35,000 increase, or decrease, I should say?
Right.
Okay. One of the points that I was looking at was basically on page seven, under streets and highways. We're, you know, we got the patch trailer for $25,000, we've got a replacement of the pickup for $25,000, and a snow pusher for $7,500. We got $50,000, $57,500 right there, and I'm not totally convinced that we need to spend. If in any case, if we don't do it there, the other option would be if you went to like page 10 in the park and recreation, under heavy equipment purchases, the 540. There's $50,000 right there earmarked for heavy equipment purchases, and there really isn't anything on Schedule 4 to be bought, along with the $5,000 for the Dodge pickup. So if 50, you know, there's a lot of entries right there that, you know, you're talking 100 and some thousand dollars right there, and there's nothing earmarked for it. So if we wouldn't want to go with like a 2% increase, we could easily eliminate a couple line items and get down, decrease it. Well, I don't know what the council's feelings are on that, but I think there is opportunity to take advantage of that. You know, to me, it doesn't make any sense, like in Parks Center, to have $50,000 earmarked for heavy equipment purchases when there's nothing in a capital improvement plan or anything like that saying that we need it. And if we would drop, we, to that, we'd have, eliminate those two line items. It's, we'd take care of the $20,000 difference between our budget and our revenues plus decrease the $35,000 on the levy to where we'd be at 2% increase.
I guess I would tend to agree with that too, because if you look at the actual dates on that, it's, it's been dropping every year because the, two years prior, we spent, or was it? 45 and in, to this year to date, 38, 852, so we probably won't even spend 40. So that's going down the way it looks.
Right.
I wouldn't have any trouble sporting that.
Yep, me neither.
My question is why we have $50,000 in there, there must have been some thought that something was being purchased?
We, we do have several items that we were looking at. We have the New Holland tractor, and then of course, the moors, they continue to wear out. The $38,852 that we spent in 2015 was that John Deere 1600 that we recently purchased. That was the after-trade amount. And then in 2014, we had purchased the Kubota and the Land Pride, or, yeah, and the Land Pride. And then the prior to that, we had, also part of that, we had the Chipper, half of the Chipper, but that's in the street department side of it. So although we don't have a specific piece of equipment that we want to purchase, we have equipment that may need to be replaced.
How does that weigh up against our CEIP, our capital improvement for the operations side?
We didn't have a specific, a specific piece of equipment listed. We were just trying to stay on schedule of getting our equipment replaced because we hadn't, we ceased to do it for a period of time. And so we're playing a little bit of catch-up.
I'm just trying to think if we did have something in the back that we had earmarked at 50 for.
But as far as I see, there isn't anything.
And it was, it was the, it was the possible, actually, we have a New Holland tractor that's pulling the Land Pride. Where it's, the Land Pride's a little big for that tractor, so they have a bigger tractor to pull that Land Pride and then keep this tractor to pull a smaller one. They were trying to figure out how to be the most efficient with that equipment, and that's what they were talking about.
Okay. Any other comments?
You know, one thing, just so you have it kind of math in your mind, for every $10,000 you decrease the levy, you would save a person that owns a $150,000 house, which is a pretty average home, $3.54 a year. So kind of give you an idea, if you look at your tax statement, what this impact would be to your tax statement. And I know that I had done that because in prior years, people asked what the impact would be to the average homeowner. And of course, it's different for a business because a business pays at a different rate.
And one of the things is, you can look at that $3 in some sense per year and say, that's not much. But, you know, that doesn't, you know, 4% is, to me, is still a healthy increase.
Yep.
There's different ways of looking at it. You can make it look as pretty as you want, or you can actually look at the other side of it and do percentages. But that's where I'm not satisfied with a 4% increase.
I agree.
I think there's areas that we can cut. Pickup replacement, that one there is a main one I have a problem with. Basically because we don't have any maintenance records showing us that this thing is bothering or giving us a nickel and diming us to the point that it's a liability for the city. And if maybe it gets to the point where if it is that bad and we don't have the money in the budget, we just live without one pickup. We just simplify things a little better.
Yeah, my recollection, I remember discussing pickups. I don't recall what we're looking to replace.
This is that Maroon Dodge, I think it's a 97, is that correct? It's a 97, the Maroon Dodge, but we always called it Tom's truck when Tom was working here. And it is, it has issues. We have not invested a lot of money in the last couple of years in repair because we knew it was slated for replacement. So catch 22, you don't have a lot of maintenance records because you haven't been doing a lot of maintenance because you're planning on getting rid of it. So now we don't have, if we need the maintenance records, we have a lot of it, so we need to support exchanging it out. But we didn't spend it because we were planning to change it out, so that was kind of where that, where what happened there. You know, we did get some new ones a few years ago, we upgraded some of our equipment. We don't want to get too far behind the eight ball and then have them all stack up on us again either. So we kind of have to walk that balance. I don't know if Matt has any comments regarding the different types of things that you're thinking of, maybe eliminating? Maybe he has a preference or a recommendation or an explanation that maybe you want to hear? It's up to you. Or maybe he doesn't want to.
Matt, you want to come on up and explain some of your ideas here? It's basically looking like your department's the one that's getting the focus.
Yeah, we're under the act. Um, basically, from what I've noticed, there hasn't been a specific capital, or like an equipment changeover plan. So specific items have not been, it's just like we handpick one here and there every year, is what it kind of seems like. So I have concern about eliminating it and lowering it because when we get to that point where we do have a set plan, it's not going to be there and it's hard to get it back. So some of the big things that would be replaced is the motor grader, it's an 83, you got your 97 truck. Um, we really want to get that plow truck replaced, but that's under the sinking fund, so that's being taken care of. And some additional equipment we'd like to purchase is possibly a crack sealer, you know, like an actual, because we got a lot of new pavement coming in, so the option is either we do it or we contract it out. So we could possibly save some money there. So there is a lot of equipment that would either like to be replaced or added also, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. One of the things is, is, you know, we've got the $25,000 in the sinking fund for the park and rack. That, you know, I can see we leave that alone. Um, we also have the sinking fund, about $35,000 for the future replacement.
Of the plow truck.
For the plow truck.
Correct.
Which we're not disputing at all.
Right, yep.
It's just, you know, do we need that $50,000 in heavy equipment purchases? And for 2016, the park and rack, when we already just got done buying a mower?
Well, to give you an idea, the mower was actually $58,000.
Okay.
And then after our trade-in and stuff, that's why we didn't actually spend the full 50. But we'd really like to replace or upsize that utility tractor. So that's easily 45 in there, pretty easy, I could say. So it's really up to you, you know, it is. And, but the idea that it's not earmarked for something is kind of false because we can obviously replace something if allowed.
Okay. And I understand, you're, you're new at that position.
Right.
And you're still working the budget and stuff.
Yep, and what do we need and what don't we need?
That, that kind of stuff isn't stuff that we probably should have had at the original budget meeting.
Correct.
You know, and at that time, you were still swimming with a lot of other different ideas. I personally think that if any, you know, when you come back to budget, at the end of next year, that if we have specific earmarks that we need to do, I don't see there's going to be a problem getting that money back in line. But for right now, I think one more year of having an undersized tractor on a mower isn't, you know, we've done it for how long now? One more year's not going to hurt us.
No.
It, you know, it's just, it's nice, but it's part of that wish list that I'm not justifying. And I know I shouldn't be calling it a wish list, but basically every capital improvement thing is that. I think we could just, you know, the, take the $50,000 out of the park and wreck, and then in the meantime, street department and park department could get a list of how they want to do this rotation thing. So right now, like you said, there isn't anything set.
Right.
And, you know, it's picking and choosing what we want to replace rather than have a set thing. Every other department basically has a rotation, and we kind of go by it when we do the budgets. And I think, you know, if you can get that in place, then next year, it'd be a lot more easy.
Something to keep in mind is what happens when you do these is you set all these goals in mind to replace things every 10 years, things like that, but they keep getting pushed and pushed and pushed. And once the money is gone and depleted, it's so hard to get it back.
Right.
To actually achieve replacement.
Right, but we're, you know, we're not talking sinking funds.
Correct.
You know, we're, we're just talking this line item budget, which sinking funds are made for that recouping and doing, if we need to increase it, we can increase it.
Okay.
But a separate line item is where I'm having the issues on, considering we don't have nothing earmarked for it. Counsel, got any other comments rather than?
Well, I mean, I know we had these discussions, and there's been lots of equipment that hasn't been purchased for a long time. I mean, what, 12 years or something we've been holding a levy? Sooner or later, it breaks, and that's what happens. And this year, we decided, well, we're going to have to buck up and do something. And we were ending a lot of TIF districts, it was a good time to do it. I mean, I know some people's taxes are up, mine actually is down a few bucks for the city. I mean, everything, you know, other things are up, but the city's actually down a couple of dollars for, for whatever my classification ends up being. So I don't, you know, the levy wasn't up that much, 4% after, you know, 12 years. levy wasn't up that much. Four percent after, you know, twelve years, everything's going up. It's been going up for years and we've been trimming back. And I know we haven't been buying stuff. And I remember these discussions during the budget, that there's a lot of things that are old. I mean, pickup truck, almost twenty years old.
Street sweeper.
You know, I mean, you drive it till it drops and there's no money in the budget anyway.
Well, we did replace one too, though.
Oh, I know. Well, we've had a lot of old pickup trucks.
Yeah.
And you got a valid point. It's just the fact that, okay, just because we, for the last eight years, haven't increased levy, all of a sudden now, we need to jump at four percent, when we obviously, in front of us, have got areas where we could drop it down to at least two. To me, it's just, okay, you know, change of command, let's go for it and let's start doing everything. And I'm not comfortable with doing that. You know, we got a change of command in here, we got a change of command up here, whatever. All of a sudden to jump four percent without a good explanation, kind of. And you can argue it all night long. I guess, I'm looking for other comments and what concerns are.
I guess the only question is, we're going to change the budget now. I know we went through it before. We don't have to spend the money anyway. I mean, all this stuff has to be approved down the road.
Right. But it's the levy that we need to.
Yep.
Adjust. And if we don't change some of the budget now, we can't change the levy. So...
I know in my mind, I had a, I had personal feelings about, just collectively, this hundred and five thousand to the crack fill, twenty-five thousand to the patch trailer, and then another fifty thousand between parks and streets for the, the truck, just seems like a lot of possibility, you know, like, it's not, it's not spoken for completely. It's not, there's no purchase, you know, ticket written up. It's just a lot of money.
One of the things is, you know, this can get adjusted to a certain extent in adopting the budget. But the levy is what's going to dictate it. And so, we kind of have to know who's willing to go to two percent, one percent, or three, or just leave it alone. And then that, if, once we decide if we want to go to two percent, like I do, then we'll decide where we're going to make the change in the budget and where, and to get that figure. I'm, I want to go two percent, nothing more. I don't know who else can make that adjustment.
You know, that's a levy question. This is the budget right now.
Okay.
I mean, the budget is really no more than a guideline anyway. We don't have to spend the money that's in here. If you want to lower the levy and live with that, we can work out the budget anytime. We certainly don't have to settle it now. Now, there's sinking fund money we put in at the end of every year. If the money's not there, we don't sink it. So, there's, there's always a cushion in the budget that way. But I, I'm reluctant to, to start axing the budget now. We had budget meetings. We went through all these things. There was a reason these numbers got into the budget to this point. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to ax them. And we went through this. I mean, there were reasons why the budget numbers stayed in the first time around. I'm, I'm not comfortable with, at this date, without a real meeting about it, just saying, well, let's just take them out again. I don't remember why they're there, we're taking them out.
Okay. The only thing is, is to adopt the budget, we got to adopt the final figures for each department, right?
But there's no obligation to spend that money. There never has.
No, but the money's going to come in, the levy is going to go into a fat.
The levy is lowered, that is independent of the budget. And obviously, if you lower the levy, you aren't going to have the money. You're going to have to cut it someplace, somehow.
But how does that?
But you don't have to do that now.
How, how does, how does that make a, a business owner or homeowner feel if, oh, here, just take my money, but you might not spend it? It just, it feels wrong.
And I know when we look at four percent, last year, my taxes went down a lot. I think everybody's did. Yeah, this year, they're coming up. Last year, they went down. For years, they've been pretty stable.
I, I have no problem with a two percent levy, but four percent, I think, is a bit high. I don't want to throw that on the taxpayers.
The one thing is, is even though we saw you decrease that last year, doesn't mean we got to try to recoup that plus more.
No, no, I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's a four percent increase this year in the levy, and people are seeing it on their taxes. But, you know, if you look back two years, taxes are probably still a lot less than they were then.
True.
So, I don't, I mean, if, if the feeling is that we don't want to go at, you know, we don't want to go more than two percent, that's okay. We can go with a two percent levy, and we can find ways to work with it. But I'm, I don't know that I want to try and do that now. You know, we, I think, if we want to look at where we're cutting, who's not buying equipment, I think we need more discussion than, than now. We had this discussion a couple of months ago, and that the budget numbers are there because of that.
Vicki, if we, can we adopt the budget the way it is and then adjust the levy? Or do we have to find out where the?
What, the thing that you have to adopt for certain tonight is the levy, what that final number is. You can adopt this budget, and this budget is amendable at any time.
Okay.
You can come back in January and make a budget amendment. You can do it in July, you can make a budget amendment. We have traditionally not necessarily amended the budget throughout the year, but we've made conscious decisions not to buy certain things, you know, so it would come in under budget if we, rather than amending the budget each time we made that decision. But the one thing that is certain is we have to adopt the levy tonight in the final number you proposed to levy. The budget, you can adopt this budget and you can amend it at any time.
Okay.
In dollar amounts, Vicki, what's the difference between two and four percent on our general levy?
It's about, about thirty-two thousand dollars. So, thirty-two thousand dollars on a household would be, you know, nine and a half, ten dollars, according to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar house now. Make sure, I know everybody knows, has a different value of house, and it affects commercial differently. So, I try to put it in a little bit of perspective, I think.
So, just to clarify, a two percent cut is, on an average type house, like you're talking, is about ten dollars a year?
Correct.
Okay.
So, like you and I were talking, it's thirty-two thousand or thirty-five thousand for a two percent. And then we had the twenty thousand dollars difference between the revenue and the expenditure budget.
There was, yes. There was, in our proposed, general proposed revenue, there was twenty thousand dollars more expense proposed than revenue. And that gets back to the, we get closer to the end of the year, and we don't put in things in sinking funds, or we don't buy something that we might have otherwise purchased. It's really hard when you start this budget in, in June of fifteen for expenses that might not happen until December of sixteen. So, it's really hard to predict that number. And so, we try to keep it, keep it close with knowing we have to change it as we move along.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or anything, since this is a public meeting, about the discussions that were happening? Let's see any, is there any other comments or anything like that for the public meeting that the council wants to bring up? I think basically, we know where we're, each of us stands. So, with that, we will move on to the action items then. Approved resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty-four, adopting the two thousand sixteen budget.
I guess that was the whole staff report right there.
Okay. As you know, we can adopt the two thousand sixteen budget, and we can amend it at any time. So, do I have a motion to review the budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the budget as presented.
Okay. We have a motion by Dave. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Second by Keith. Any other comments or questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty-five, adopting two thousand sixteen levy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for two percent.
Okay. We have a motion from Diane to approve, certify the final property tax levy for two percent collectible in two thousand sixteen.
I'll second.
We have a second by Heidi. Any other questions or comments?
I will only point out that, that the budget is already twenty thousand dollars behind. This will make it, you know, the thirty-two or so. Just, just awareness.
Which is a very good point, but, so, it was also brought up that we can amend the budget at any time, and if we need to make cuts to make that equal out, we can do that. So, any other comments or questions? I have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty-five, certifying the final property tax levy for taxes collectible in two thousand sixteen at two percent. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution two thousand fifteen dash eighty-six, inter-fund transfers.
As you know, at the end of each year, we move funds, and we talked about sinking funds a couple times today already. And then there's also money that gets moved into debt service. We close certain funds and that. There's a few on here that are the sinking fund transfers, kind of like you talked about. The first one on there, or the second one on there is the comp plan funds. We've been budgeting to update our comprehensive plan. And so, that is a sinking fund transfer. And then also, we have one for the plow truck, thirty-five thousand further down. We have one for the storm shelter at the campground. We have the campground expansion. We have the park fund equipment. So, those are the sinking fund ones that we were talking about. There's five of them in here. The other, the other transfers are to close out funds, close out debt service, close out project funds. We're kind of shrinking how many funds we have because we're going to a new accounting software, and, and these are old projects that are done. We just want to get rid of them and, and close them out. It includes the, the fire department, share of the city hall payment is in there. You recall, and ambulance garage borrowed from the general fund to buy the ambulance building, so that's, that transfer is taken care of. There is a transfer of reimbursement of lost tax base when we purchased the ambulance garage. There was a concern about lost tax base, that that went under government. And then the last one there was, if you recall, from the county, we had a one-time allocation of small city transportation aid, which the council had previously decided to save that for next year. And so, that would be going into the sinking fund as well. So, this kind of embodies a year's worth of kind of a, we've talked about a lot of these in the past, but this is one action that puts it all into perspective on one, one resolution. And then we make those changes in the software, and you'll see that in your next, in your report then that comes out. You'll see cash balances go to zero because the money got moved out of that fund. And if you have any questions on anything specific, I can explain where this came from, but this is kind of a routine action that we take every year.
Questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution number two thousand fifteen dash eighty-six, approving two thousand fifteen inter-fund transfers? So, moved. Motion by Keith.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved building official contract.
As you know, our building official, Dwayne Ostrowski, who's been with the city, I think, since two thousand two, is retiring. He does have Rick Holt, who is here with us tonight, who has been working with Dwayne for the last couple of years. And if you recall, when I mentioned that Dwayne was retiring earlier, you recommended, let's, let's enter into a contract with Rick. Then we would have that for a year, and then we would review that at the end of the year to see if we wanted to continue the relationship. And so, I do have in your packet a copy of the building official services contract. You will see at the end of it, it does say that it will renew, but we have sixty days ahead of that to, you know, opt out of it. Or he has sixty days ahead of the expiration to opt out of it as well. He may not like us. I don't know for sure. The payment that he would receive is the same as Dwayne receives right now. He would receive eighty percent of the building permit fee, which he would use then for his expenses for all his inspections and, and record keeping that he does. He would receive a hundred percent of the plan check fee, which is simply someone is going to do a building, and they have building plans that he needs to review to make sure they meet the code. So, that is the setup that we've had with Dwayne. The last year, I think the prior year, Dwayne actually got eighty-five percent, and we reduced that to eighty percent. So, that's what we're recommending. Rick did come to the meeting tonight so he could meet you. I don't know if you have any questions for him. His background is in the trades, so that is good. We have someone that knows construction, that is now a licensed building official. So, we figure that we are fortunate to have him. It's getting more and more difficult to find local building officials. And so, I don't know if you have any questions, if you want to meet him, if he wants to say a word or two or not, but otherwise, I'm going to ask you to enter into the contract with him for building official services.
I just had one question. You've been, Rick, you've been working with Dwayne?
Yeah, well, I'm currently a building official for the city of Starbucks. I've been with them for close to seven years. Dwayne actually was designated to do the commercial work though because of his limited, I wasn't able to do that at times. I've also spelled Dwayne here in Sox Center.
My, my question would be, are there any projects that Dwayne is currently overseeing that will last past his retirement date?
We have a couple of them. One would be probably Centricare would be one of them. And then also, we have St. Paul's Church. So, there's, there's going to be an overlap there, but that is between the two of them.
Okay.
And that.
That's what I was wondering there's.
So, if there's something that Dwayne has been paid for a building fee, but then he is going to do the inspections, then Dwayne owes him that money back. But that's an agreement they have between them in their relationship. And then Dwayne has also agreed to stay on to answer questions, perhaps have a contractor meeting in the spring, that type of thing. So, he's not like leaving town or anything. He's just retiring.
Okay. That's, just some familiarity with projects that will be left.
I just was designated long-term building official too, so.
Okay.
I live in Alexandria, which is only a half hour away. So, probably till the end of December, I'm still in construction. So, walking away from that is.
Okay.
It's a little tight, so.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the contract with Rick Holt for building official services?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Keith.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Approved two thousand sixteen senior dining contract with Catholic charities.
You know that Catholic charities provide senior dining services at the senior center. We've actually done it, I think, four or five years already it's been going on. They are proposing to renew the contract under the same terms and conditions to two thousand sixteen. There's not actually a rent per se, because they don't pay rent when they're facilities, but we did negotiate, they reimburse us for garbage and cleaning at two hundred and twenty-five a month. So, they do come in under that. And I did provide you a copy of the contract, which is the same one that we have approved each year for the last several years. So, we are recommending that we approve the contract with senior dining for two thousand sixteen.
Questions?
Just the two twenty-five does cover the cleaning and garbage?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the contract with the senior dining for two thousand sixteen?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved wage increase, fire department?
The members of the fire department, they serve in various capacities such as fire chief, assistant chief, second assistant, secretary treasurer, training officer, and truck foreman. And they do receive additional stipends for that. The last time we changed the rate for the fire chief was two thousand and two, and the last time for the truck foreman, or I guess the truck for, or the two thousand two was for the chief and the truck foreman, two thousand seven for the other positions. So, they are proposing that we raise the stipends. This is an annual rate. So, like, the fire chief from three thousand to thirty-five hundred annually, first and second assistant chief, and the secretary treasurer would be. and the secretary treasurer would be from 450 to 550 annually, the training officer from 500 to 600 annually, and the truck foreman, which there are six of them, $75 to $100. So the total annual impact is $1,050. And that is included in the 2016 proposed budget. We did talk about it at the preliminary meeting. So I, we're requesting to approve the pay rates for the fire department as presented.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I got a, I got a question. How was this arrived at? I mean, normally, normally, any of the, any of the pay in the city goes through, you know, personnel committee negotiations.
Actually, both of these, the fire department and the ambulance department were presented, or were proposed by the department heads. They didn't go to the committees themselves, because they felt that, because we had talked about it at the preliminary budget hearing. I think they were, they presented it directly to the whole council.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the rate increases for fire department as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, second.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved wage increase, ambulance department?
Likewise, for the ambulance department, I did put the current wage scale that they have, that was adopted in 2009. It's been in effect for six years, this, at the same rate, and you can see across there. We have different rates for driveway, driver probation or EMT. And then the EMTs have it on like a one to five year, five to 10. So if you haven't been familiar with that before, that's how it works. And so they are proposing an increase. It's actually an overall 6% increase, because they were figuring 1% a year for the six years that they didn't take an increase. So that would be, the annual impact would be $6,800 for the year, based on average runtime that we have seen over the last couple of years. So we can't ever predict exactly what that number is going to be. And then in addition to that, the, the department management, we set up the hierarchy for the department management in 2006, and we have never changed the rate of pay since that time, which was $18 for the director, 17 for the assistant, and 15 for the training coordinator. So they are requesting that same increase of 6% would go to 1908, 1802, and 1590. So the impact of that change is approximately $1,000. So we're looking at a total of $7,800 increase for the ambulance department wages. She did include that in the budget, as we talked about earlier. And she was going to be here tonight, but couldn't make it. Tim is here. He might have some insight onto how we arrived at those numbers. Otherwise, we would be requesting to approve the rate increases.
As I stated, we have discussed that at the preliminary meetings, so budget meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the rate increases for ambulance department as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7H, approved Resolution 2015-88, approving gambling premises permit, Sox Center Conservation Club.
This was the ad that you had on your agenda tonight, and if you recall, a few meetings ago, we had Isaac's North Star in here talking about wanting to get pull tabs. And so now this is the actual resolution approving that Sox Center Conservation Club actually goes there, and that is considered a gambling premise. And so this is actually for one month, and then it will renew it on December 31st. So all our renewals will come in at that time. So what they do need, though, is a resolution from us that they can send in with their permit. And so that is Resolution 2015-88, approving the gambling premise permit for the conservation club to hold gambling activities at Isaac's North Star, which would be a pull tabs.
Okay. Questions? I take it for that one month is prorated fee, or is, or not a fee?
This isn't, there's not a fee for the lease, because this is just us approving the conservation club going in there.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-88, approving the gambling premises permit for the Sox Center Conservation Club at Isaac's North Star?
So moved.
We have a motion by Keith.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, offer to purchase transit garage.
This item of unfinished business I, I put on here is unfinished because I believe that we met with the transit representatives at operations committee meeting, I think it was. And so I'd like to send this offer back to them, and then they would come with a recommendation to the city council. So this is just to send this offer to purchase back to the same committee that met before. And then, then they would then bring that to the city council, probably at a closed meeting. So, because you can close it to negotiate, but I'd like to take it through that committee first, because I don't have another board that's in charge of the transit garage. So I don't know, with your blessing, I guess that's what I, what's my intent is to do with that.
Is that okay with the council?
Sounds fine by me.
You say operations?
I think it was operations that met on it before.
Yes, it's a.
It was like, it was like nine months ago. I mean, it was a long time ago. I have to think, I'll, I'll double check, make sure I send it to the right place.
It seemed like it would fall in the finance more than.
Well, I, when we met the first time, when it started, it wasn't about selling the transit garage. It was about sorting out use and ownership stuff, so.
Right. And then that changed, so.
Yeah, that's, it's different now, so that's why, I don't know if it's operations or not.
Right.
Well, I will send it whichever one you feel that it should go to.
I think it actually finance.
I would think finance.
Finance would be the one that would look at that, considering it is a sale. So operations has quite a bit on its plate right now.
Yes, yes, we're really swamped.
Finance it is.
Okay, thank you. New business, set closed meeting session to consider sale of real estate.
This is what I talked about. The EDA met again today with a prospective purchase of the, of the interpretive center, and they did put a letter of intent, and an offer on the table. And so this is something that the city council could consider at closed session. If you recall, when we were purchasing real estate, we went into closed sessions and for negotiation purchases, purposes. So I think that would be an appropriate thing to do here. We could set that closed meeting, and actually, it might fall together that the transit garage and this could be heard at the same meeting. It's not something that has to be done tomorrow, but I certainly would like to do it no later than the next council meeting. It could be done prior to the next council meeting, or it could be at the end of the next council meeting, or it could be sometime next week. But I wanted it to bring it before you, because I know everybody has busy schedules. What we had done in the past was, we just went into closed session at the end of a regular meeting for this type of thing. But we can have it a different night, too, if you prefer.
Council's wishes? I'm, I was discussing with, do it after the next council meeting on the 16th. Our council meetings, and Vicki says the agenda for the 16th really isn't that big, so.
That's fine.
We have an hour meeting, we can.
The reason that we have to kind of like set it at a meeting for another meeting is that we need to let, you know, the public needs to know, if you're going to go into closed session, what your subject matter is, because as a general rule, all public business has to be in the public. That's just one of the reasons, one of the reasons you're legally allowed to close it. So. So we'll set that for, at the regular December meeting, December 16th meeting, and it'll just follow the regular business. At the end of regular business, we'll go into closed session.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that? Moving on, consent agenda, schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $85,895.84, paid claims of $40,975.83, for a total of $126,871.67. We have Resolution Number 2015-87, accepting contributions of $3,000 from the Sox Center seniors to be placed toward the senior center, $125 from Verizon Wireless to be placed, put toward the splash pad, and $250 from Stern's Electric Association to be put toward the ambulance. On behalf of the city, I want to thank those contributors for their donations. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane.
Second.
Second by Dave. Is there any other questions or comments about the calendar? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items.
We have two informational items in the packet. You have your flyer for Christmas on Main Street, which is this coming Friday night. They have the tree lighting, they have free babysitting if you want to go shopping, they have a vendor show, visit with Santa, bake sale, ugly sweater contest, holiday beverage sampling, and free gift wrapping, and then also, they have homemade baked goods and wreaths, et cetera, from the Tooty Fruity Market. So you'll see those flyers around town Friday, December 4th, starting at, I believe, 5 o'clock in downtown. So it's kind of our Christmas on Main Street. The second item that I just wanted to remind you, because I had circulated a email to make sure you would be available, that Monday night, the 14th, so that would be like 10 days from now, there is going to be a concurrent meeting with the public utility. It will be held here at 5:30, and we'll be receiving a presentation from Missouri River, Missouri River Power regarding a power purchase agreement. And so that'll be right here at 5:30. And then, on the regular meeting on the 16th, then you'll be asked to adopt a resolution for this power purchase, but she'll explain all that to you on the 14th when she's here. So, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
That, that concludes the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.
Good meeting.